I guess this is fiscal year 2026 budget year. My name is Jeff Clark. I chair the Board of Finance. And we're going to go through first, I'll go to the Board of Finance, portion of presentation. Follow me that, the General Government will talk in detail about their operating budget, and then finally the Board of Education will talk to their budget. We'll do public comment at the end of each section, so before I turn over to the General Government, we'll have a public comment, and we'll ask that comments be limited to two minutes. We'll give preference to people that haven't had a chance to speak yet. And I'll be moderating the meeting, so on my part, you can ask me after the other part. Ask me, and I'll direct to the great person answering to my ability. And with that, we'll get started. I do want to first introduce the Board of Finance members who are here. Chair Melissa, Paula Krasinski is here, Todd Springer is here, Todd Jessen there, Jim McPherson, and Jeff Akt. So thank you all for being here. You gave me this arrow, and you still look out. Okay, no different than every year. Back in January, we had asked for the Board of Education to select me to talk about the budget drivers, not really numbers, but what's going on this year. It could be enrollment, it could be building, it could be challenges. During February, we look at the grant list. We have nothing like last year, the grant list. And then we take that information and provide direction to the board, and you can see what we said. Two and a half and 4.1% to the boards. They come back to us in March, and what they recommended. In April, we reviewed them, and we said the budget should go see tonight. So the Board of Selectment is 2.8%, the Board of Ed is 4.1%. The tax increase that we're proposing to go with that is 2.35%, although the mill rate doesn't get set until after there's a town meeting and approved budget. But we anticipate that would be the increase to mill rate in support of what you're going to see tonight. We're here at the Blue Thing. After the meeting tonight, the Board of Finance will meet. May or may not make changes to what we see tonight. And then the town meeting. I believe that day is wrong, it's just 5.6%, but I believe the town meeting is 5.7%. And typically, that gets adjourned to a heat and a sheet vote a couple weeks later. Okay, our sources of revenue, property taxes, which is taxes we all pay on our home businesses and cars. The grant list is as of last October 1st. We have various grants from the state. Town fees and interest, which continue to run higher than we planned. And use of cash balance, those are the places we can get money from to fund the ongoing operations. There are several funds in town that are for all the funds that have specific purposes. Those are excluded from the operating budget. Here's the mill rate, both cars, mortgage, all kinds of property going up 2.35% as we just walked in. State grants, it's a budget year where we're using the government's proposed budget. Pretty steady. We have a little bit of a decrease in state grants of about 4.4%. We lost a little bit to offset that with motor vehicles. Our mill rate was above a threshold until this current year, and the states were reimbursing towns because they imposed a threshold on mill rate. So no big news in state grants. And paymentless taxes continues to be way behind what it could be commercially for jet propellables. Permits, building permits are way up this year. Interest on general fund continues to be higher. It was pretty high last year. We anticipated rates would come down a little bit in 2025. They really... We anticipate they come down more than they did, so we've done good on General Government. Cash balance, we intend to always keep about 10% of our budget in the cash balance. That allows for things at the beginning of the year, costs that committed before taxes are collected. We desire to raise that if we're going to anticipate borrowing. So if you see some kind of bonding on the horizon, we'd like to get that number higher than 10%. Like higher by 15, so 16, somewhere up there. And I think I hit on some of these. Our balance can get better if we get more state money, we get more general fund interest, more building permits, more airplane permits, and those kind of things. For respect. We're shooting for 10.36% in the account. We anticipate drawing with 529,000. I have a slide later. That's less than we drew last year. We had a couple of bigger years of drawn from cash balance. And we look out over a five-year horizon, and while every year further out is more and more uncertainty, we can trade up at a 10% number in our sights or a different number if we're looking at borrowing in that horizon. We have some uncertainty with the Surry Use Fund, you may be aware of. We really, there's a lot of work going on. It's trying to figure this out. There's a potential deficit. Right now, we're anticipating the town could be coming to request a million one. If they do, we're kind of saying we're ready for that. That's probably a little bit more than half of what people think the total liability could be. So it's a complicated situation. We're hoping for some relief from NBC on some of the rates, but do want to let you know we're thinking about it, and where we'd be without that being over 14%. This is the eye chart. Our total spending has gone up about 600,000 from 27.7% to 28.8. Revenue is 27.7% to 28.8%. We're using the last general fund bound by about 300,000. And during, we do anticipate lower town revenues. I keep looking at interest rates. Are they going to be this high next year? I don't know, but let's assume they're going to come down some. We're having a great time with building permits. They'll continue. I don't know, we're not going to plan on it. So that's why we're suggesting that we'll be down on revenues from financial upper. From 966, 966,000 this year to about 667 next year. So I think that's conservative. Here's the chart. The big thing is property taxes on that state is a component of our income, consistent with other towns. Expenditures. One thing we're going to do this year, so we're doing the math on the percentage for the government if not going to work. And we're going to transfer, we made a decision to reduce funding into capital by 100,000, move into the general government budget. That's been an amount that's been consistent for a couple of years for fire department apparatus. Not fire departments, but fire department maintenance and safety. Those kind of items really should be in the operating budget. So they're getting increased, but there's an offset in capital. And we have a minor reduction in debt service that, it's not really a reduction, it's just in our payments. We know what they are each year, and this year they're going down a little bit by 15,000 bucks. Expenditures. Board of Ed is the biggest one, the General Government is the second biggest one. Again, that's not inconsistent with what you've seen the years past or with other towns. Debt service, these are the debts we have. So we have elementary school project expenditure in fiscal '27. The longest one is the RuPaul's Project that started in 2021 that goes up to 2041. And the school LED is this fiscal '26 that we're talking about. It's the last year on that. The elementary school project is a minimum of about a half million bucks a year. So when that comes out, that's a nice chunk of change. Capital reserve fund, so we wrote on an amount to go into that fund. Think of it as a savings account. We actually can't spend it unless we come back to you and tell you what we're going to spend it on. But we're not really appropriating new money at that time. So there are some rules around what kind of items can take advantage of that money. It has to be presented to the Board of Finance and approved, and then there's a town meeting. Typically, we have one in the June timeframe, and maybe a couple others throughout the year. We maintain a finer capital plan. We have a capital policy that asks us to keep certain targets up for a balance in that fund so that we have money in case there's an opportunity or a big crisis, so that we're not looking for money somewhere and get steep questions. So I talked about the first one-time item, which is 100,000 from capital back to the General Government operating fund. The second one-time item is the General Government projected to lay under spend on capital for this year. The biggest driver of that was the 90,000 bucks for the basic capabilities reforms, but there's some other items in there. We decided as a board at our last meeting, I think, because we were on track to meet our targets for balance in the account, that we would just put 200,000 left in this year rather than beef it up. So we'll come back to next year and have to explain that it's going to look like a big increase and about to show a couple of years to date, but I'd expect year over year that we would put 200,000 in next year. But hey, see that we need to finish here. I think this is the end of my part, so I will open up for questions.
Because I go back to Slide 12. I just want to make sure I read that right. Decreasing debt service by 19,000. Oh, okay. I think I read it wrong. Sorry.
Okay, so you. Other question?
On page 10. The non-education revenue, we're projecting it to go down by like $300,000, $400,000. I was wondering, it's going down from 1,043,000 to 658,000 roughly.
That is the amount we were getting from the state last year for the motor vehicle tax I mentioned. So they had imposed a threshold. It's a year in a year, but they had imposed a threshold, our property tax was above that. So we had a tough motor vehicle that had the threshold, and then they have a formula that says, well, what would you have done if you had to accidentally re-crea property? And we'll give you the difference. So...
So it's less. We used to tax it higher, and now it's...
Yeah.
So our car taxes are maybe going down?
Well, they're not going down, but they're below that threshold now. The threshold has been 32.46. So if we get there a couple of years, we'll talk about it.
Just to comment off of that one. We actually saw our car taxes go down last year with the mill rate reset because we were originally calculating at 32.7, whatever that cap rate was, and now it's below that. So we saw like a 5% to 10% savings year over year for excise.
Other questions? All right. Who's next?
Well, as he gets it set up, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I'm relatively new. My name is Lisa Matt, and I'm a new finance director. I have the privilege of working for you guys, and you guys have a great town. You really, really do. The residents are awesome, the people, the administration have been great. So I want to thank you all for taking me in and welcoming me with open arms to start with. So thank you. Okay, I tried to make it short and sweet, guys, to the point. My budget has been up for months, line by line, so it's pretty easy. This is our department heads. These are the people that work for your town every day. You've got the Board of Finance, your Board of Selectmen, and all your department heads. We all take pride in what we do. We love what we do, we believe in what we do, and we believe in this town. So as I go through this budget, we've met with every department head collectively and separately, even and I, to try to get an idea of where they're at, where they want to go, and how collectively we can bring the town together, and try to save money through means of efficiency in operations and technology. So our budget last year was 5.6 million. You guys know that. This year it's 5,865. You heard Jeff talk about the transfer of the 100,000. Might look a little confusing. You're like, wait, so you're deciding how can you jump up that much? But it doesn't change the mill rate. It's more of an accounting thing, taking it out of capital budget and moving into operational, the general government. So we actually represent a 2.8% group. I put those numbers up. Last year, the budget that you guys approved was at 3.18 group. Now we're at 2,810, so we dropped the 5.37 here over here in comparison. Once again, met with every department head, you know. Where do we want to be? Where do we want to go? What can we do better? All the budgets we had before was like, oh, it's 2,000 this line on, year over year, every year. But wait, stop. We're only spending $1,000. Why are we budgeting 2,000 and we're only spending 1,000? So we found a lot of efficiencies by meeting with the department heads and going through the actuals. I know we had Board of Finance had an email saying, trying to compare the actuals to everything. And just so you guys know, every single month, we present a forecast of month, year-to-date actuals, and forecasting out where we expect to end the rest of the year. So actuals are being looked at. No, where do we go to judge? Union contracts. Who here wears with union contracts on the website? Is anybody? So our union contracts, I started at 3%. Our union contracts have a 3% salary. General Government, our main expense is payroll. So coming out of the gate, I've got 3% hitting at me, and I'm going, uh-uh, I need less. So we have to find less. And that's how we came down to 2.81. So small concessions here, there, and everywhere help us maintain that and keep our 3% contract of union rate. Correcting allocations. You know, we're growing. We all grow. We all have changes. We're also getting with the times now. You know, we want to match what other municipalities look like. They have a finance department. Lo and behold, you have one and a half people doing finance, so we created a finance department. You know, it's not changing the bottom-line numbers, it's just showing where the allocations are. Board of Finance asked that the audit that they choose go in their line on. Simple stuff like that, but trying to make things more transparent and easier for everyone to understand. This part is actually really cool. In the cuts, we can get another assistant mechanic. Our DPW, have you guys like noticed trucks can be scrappy compared to trucks in other towns? They're like immaculate. Like the page is perfect, everything's washed, they're running good. They don't have like mufflers dragging on the ground, you know. We take pride in what we have. The fire engine, I walked over there, they're working on a 1998 fire engine. The mechanics, it was wild. So in our DPW garage, it's fabulous, and it is fantastic. We save a ton of money this way. We're able to reduce outside costs and have other people fix our machinery, fix our fire engines, fix our police truck cars, all because of our DPW. So they do tremendous jobs. So anytime you see them, thank those guys. Let's see, what else we got? A parts and tax clerk, that's for progression. You know, our tax, we only have one person in the office. People do bonification, you know, and she's also taking courses to be an assessor. So we've got to make sure, we just have a little bit of background back up there. Increase hours, parking rack. We all love parking racks. We all love being outside, don't we? You guys have like gazebo and different places to go. So we increased fare hours from 5 to 19 and a half, minimal, still no benefits. That's what they asked for, but we can only give 19.5 this year. If I start talking fast right now, just tell me to slow down. When I get excited, I do. My mother even told me, Lisa, I had to replay, remember the voicemails, like tapes years ago? I used to have to rewind it to understand what you were saying. And I take no offense if you go, what did you say again? And this can get kind of confusing because this part you also don't see. When I present a general government budget, you're only seeing the expenses, you're not seeing the revenue side. The assessment and tax collection is a huge portion in what we do. You heard Jeff talk about our assessor. I don't know if anyone has read about the other towns. Most grant lists, unless they're in a revow, went down. Okay, due to litigation that has passed recently for veterans and motor vehicle, many towns lost money in the grants, which means just additional taxation. So our assessor went crazy. She's excellent, Dawn, she's top not assessor, and at least gave us a grant list that grew 2%. That is phenomenal considering the legislation that just came out and the veterans exemptions, which are well-deserved, but are getting. More importantly with this is efficiencies. I opened up talking about how we're going to try to keep increasing efficiencies throughout town hall. And one of them is with our tax collection. It might sound a little weird getting into numbers, but when you do a budget, you start with a grant list, and then you say, hey, we expect to get a certain percent, and we expect a certain percent not to pay. Allowance for doubtful accounts, does that make sense to everybody? You expect not everyone's going to pay their motor vehicle tax. You have people moving out of state that don't even know they have it, that kind of stuff. So we have year over year budget to 98%. Our tax office has been running closer to 99 for over 10 years. The current tax collector and the previous two. That says a lot about all of you. You guys take pride in what you do. But as a result, you need to get rewarded for that too. So we increased the budget and collection rate to 98.5. That is $127,000 back to you. So you don't see in this budget, so while we're asking for 157,000, we're also giving back to you 127,000 through efficiencies. So your general government budget is only costing you $30,000 this year. More is exciting. So I get excited over that stuff. I'm sorry. Feedback, the departmental summaries, last three years. You know, budget dollars, as I said, this has been up for months on the website. You can go to each departmental page, you can see the actuals in the year over year. We have notes. If you want, feel free to call me, email me, stop by, say hello, ask me any questions. So I'm open to that, and then this is where I'm going to close. It's hard when we do things segmented because you don't get to see wherever the goes. You guys get a tax bill and say, I have to pay this much money. Where does it go? You know, you're going to break it up here, break it up here, break it up here. This is where it goes. So for every $100, 73.91 goes to education. That might sound like a lot, but that's normal, guys. That's very normal throughout the state. Most of it always goes to education. But for every $100 you spend on taxes, 73.91 goes to education. And by the way, your school department is fantastic. You will get your school ratings across the state. You guys should be very proud. They do phenomenal jobs over in your school department. Town Hall, 988, that's for administration, that's utilities, that's insurance. That's what it takes to run the town. You've got your debt service at 413, your public works at $3.48, police department at 316, capital 124. But this is the breakout of where your $100 goes. Okay, total general government is $20.72. And that is it. So 5,865 is what we're requesting for the general. And thank you.
I'm not sure if you addressed it, but the fire department budget going up from 128 to 220, was that to buy equipment or it's...
Well, remember the capital, it's coming back in because we put all PPE into the operational budget. No longer is a...
So that was a transfer from a different place though?
Yes, exactly. That's what I was talking about in Jeff, was that 100,000, that's part of it right in there.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions? Please.
Mine's just a general question. Somebody's on Rambie Television trying to get on to the budget meeting, and they can't, so I don't know.
IT?
If it's up.
Is it live, Mark?
Mark?
Oh, he might have some...
Just go tap. Thanks.
Someone is complaining they can't get off, see us on TV.
Is it live, Mark? Is it live?
Not on TV, it's on the internet. It's on the internet, not on TV.
Right, not television, but on Rambie Television online, correct?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
So if they go to gctv...
They did.
...dot com, they can't see it?
It's live streaming on YouTube.
It is a live stream. Where would they go and get it on? GCTV16.org.
That's what it is, GCTV16.
But thank you.
I have a silly question, but so the department summaries. This is kind of tricky, but why are the, I can't understand the line of reason or how these are presented. Like why are they, they're not in alphabetical order. I can't figure out the order. I can't see...
You asked a fantastic question.
The lowest, you know, western...
It's the order, it's a part, mental number. And I figured you guys saw it the last previous years, that's where you want to see. One thing that this has is it has a software that I'm changing the whole presentation. It's an interactive software where you can drill down, see actuals, see previous years. You can sort it alpha, betta gold, which is what I think it should be too.
Yeah, the business seems like it's itself, right? So this seems like it could be presented in fashion.
I won't disagree.
It's more reader-friendly. I cannot, you know, spending a ton of time, look at this and say, oh, here's my biggest, you know, what's my bigger driver? Where's the biggest up or down? You know, and I think as a consumer of the information, it would be much harder.
Would you prefer to see it alpha or in order of lowest to highest?
I think lowest to highest personally, and I think, or highest to lowest, I don't really care, but numeric number, and usually percent change is pretty typical.
That's on this one?
Yeah, but yeah, it's on another page with another set of data though, so you know.
It's the same set, it just shows the dollar change.
Okay, but I don't, do I see select, like the very first line on that next slide you showed, selectmen? I go back to this page where...
Selectmen.
I'm sorry?
It's selectmen. It's the same order. See, they did it by department.
Oh, by selectmen, I'm sorry, okay.
And then you got selectmen there.
It's so tiny, it seems like it can't possibly be.
I agree wholeheartedly. That's why I want to have the software come in.
Do you want to talk about the software a little bit?
I mean, we can, but I don't have the items. Look, it's called clear.gov. You're going to see many municipalities using it when they're doing the presentations. Tallin has a great one. Sins Ferry actually just started their first year with it. It's a municipality government that is CROG-sponsored, and it allows you guys to see things a lot more clearly. It's better reporting, it's transparency. You guys get to see everything. Actuals in year to year, so we're not having these questions. We won't have little numbers like this. You know, we're trying to get more at the time, so I'm trying to increase efficiency, I guess is the best way. As I said from the beginning, because you guys are great. This town is fantastic. Other questions? All right, we'll hear on that if you change your mind. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate your time. You're very welcome. Your slides are up. Are you good, sir?
Did you hear that, Dave? No, this is a presentation today. Good evening, everyone else. I'll have to, I'm chair of the Department of Education. And at the start of our presentation tonight, that our superintendent will present us in the bar. Just wanted to let them know that we set this process back in the number. I mean, the budget is really a year-round thing. The Board of Education and nine members, which are pretty balanced between the Republicans and Democrats in town, have worked diligently together with our administration and have been total agreement with what this budget is. We've worked very hard at it. The Board of Finance this year, we're in total agreement with these numbers with us. We're glad COVID's over, and COVID didn't hurt us like we thought it could. And we're moving on, and we're moving well. But this budget, which we're happy to present, offers nothing to them. I mean, we're really at a point where our town is going to be changing. We're looking to the future. We're going to have to be making some additions and some new things. What we've done for the past 14 years will be what we're going to be doing in the next 40 years. But we are projecting for that, and we're looking at it. And again, with the growth in the town, what's going on, we hope we can all work together with it. Again, like Lisa said, she's new here, she's not from East Ramby. We work together pretty well. The Board of Finance... The Board of Finance, I contact board chairs from Board of Education around the state. And I hear horror stories about relationships between the mayors and the Board of Ed and certainly the Board of Finance. We're all in this together. I mean, all of us are doing it. We're all volunteers. We're elected by the community. And we do this, people ask me why I still do it? Because I'm proud of doing this in East Rambie. I wouldn't do this in some other town. But I think, again, we're proud. We appreciate those of you coming out tonight. We see the same faces all the time. And those are faces of concerned citizens who care about our community. So I wanted to thank everyone in all committees for that. One thing I'd like to say, Missy Bovaro, superintendent's been doing these presentations. She's been our superintendent for the past six years. She was a high school principal for a number of years. She was a middle school principal for a number of years. And before then, she came from Windsor, Connecticut as a school educator. This is going to be her last hearing presentation. There will be a town meeting presentation. Missy's going to be retiring from the superintendency. And will be moving on to try some other things. So this will be her last gig at it. And I've got to thank her. She's done a terrific job. I've had a lot of opportunities. She may not live in East Rambie, but she knows more about how your money is spent than anyone. And Mary Hines, our new business manager, we brought in last year. And has really done a phenomenal job. So as a Board of Ed, we're real pleased with what we have. We're real, real pleased with what's going on and looking forward to the future. But again, I want to thank Missy. She's made it public. She's not very loud about it, but the ones that people in the community certainly recognize what she's done for us. Thank you. Okay, now Missy will present the school board budget.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Pass Good for that. I am going to try something else. It's, I've been in education for 35 years, so I'm not sure what that try is going to look like. But I guess, I guess we will see. Who knows? You might, you might still see me. I was driving through town the other day and someone said, oh, you know, my license plate is Bavaro, it's kind of hard to miss. Which is not always a good thing on the way. You know, and I said to somebody, you know, in a few more months, you're not going to see my car as much through town. But I have a feeling I will still be around, you know, supporting this district. It really truly is, you know, a great place to be, a great place to work. And you formed me up for my presentation. Okay. I just left the high school and our fifth graders are performing tonight one of their plays. So they start at seven. Obviously, I'm here. So I went to watch the rehearsal and I left right after they were singing. It's going to be the best day of my life. So I'm going to keep that tune in my head as I move forward with this presentation, so. Because what else is going to be a best day than presenting a budget, right? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am Missy Bovaro Grandi, proud superintendent for East Rambie Public Schools. I do want to thank Chairperson Pass Good for being here. We have Mr. John Welsh from the Board of Education in the back. And also Ms. Lynn Landelina. We have members of our administrative team. Ms. Karen Golgans, our Director of Student Support Services. Mr. Tim Phelan, Middle School Principal. Mr. Tony DeMello, High School Principal. And Mrs. Mary Heiny, who is our Business Manager. Historical enrollment. This slide reflects the historical enrollment numbers as reported by NESTEC, which is the New England School Development Council. Historical enrollment does not include students in pre-K or those who attend a full-time magnet program, private school, parochial school, children who are homeschooled, or alternative education programs through an individualized education plan. This next slide reflects projected enrollment numbers, also reported by NESTEC. The numbers that we provide NESTEC are the same enrollment numbers that are annually entered into the Connecticut State Department of Education's Public School Information System. We call that PSIS. And that is done October 1st of every year. Just like the historical enrollment data, projected enrollment is based on the same criteria stated for the previous slide. These numbers also do not include any potential enrollments from new building developments happening in East Rambie. As you can see by this visual, East Rambie is expected to remain relatively flat over the next five years. And again, this is based on current numbers. This slide represents a look back and a look forward using a school level color-coded bar graph, utilizing the historical and projected data to create a picture for you. The dark gray at the bottom represents grades K through 5. The middle blue area represents grades 6 through 8. And the top light green color represents our high school, grades 9 through 12. The star at the top signals the current year. Again, this shows a relatively flat enrollment based on current students in our district. Enrollment specifically for elementary level. Maintaining the same number of sections. What that means is, you know, in kindergarten, we have four classrooms or that's considered four sections. For the upcoming 25, 26 school year will keep us with good class size guidelines in grades kindergarten and grade 1. The second column on the left, have the bold numbers going down, shows our Board of Education policy class size guideline numbers. For grades 2 through 5, we are projected to be at that guideline number or below by one student in all sections based on current enrollment. So essentially, if you're looking at that far right in red, if there's four sections for, let's look at the bottom. Four sections for grade, three sections for grade 5. Class size guidelines are 22. We are projected to be at three sections or three classrooms, all at 22 children for next year, based on current numbers. This slide simply shows the current school operating budget of $20,091,000 and the guidance from the Board of Finance for next school year of $20,923,500. Excuse me. The next, the net change of $833,500 represents a 4.1% over current budget. Budget drivers. Budget drivers remain fairly consistent from year to year. Education is person-driven and therefore our largest driver is always human talent and capital, which includes salaries and health benefits. The contractual salary increases per certified staff to the operational budget is $60239. This reflects approximately $400,000 that we are going to transfer from grants into our operating budget as a result of exhausting our rollover grant funds. As note, this line does not reflect the cumulative salaries of an additional $750,000 that we still are allocating to grants for the upcoming school year. Non-certified staff consists of paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, and other support personnel and is showing a budget increase of $143,301. This represents two additional paraprofessionals in our operating budget. They are being transferred, at least the funding is being transferred from our consultant line into our operating budget line. So the money was there, the funding is there. We're just shifting where we paid for them for current year. Originally, healthcare was being projected at 10%. We went out to bid and will be changing carriers this coming year. A 1.6% increase has been budgeted. Tuition and funding for alternative education programs includes special education placements, magnet schools, and agro signs. The amount is representative of increasing tuition and increasing student enrollment. Transportation includes the cost for an additional school bus next year. Utilities, including fuel, are being increased at 6.5%. We know that is subject to change, either up or down at this point. Special services relates to our Department of Student Support Services. To continue to meet student service needs of our district, the overall increase is expected to be $139,500. This line item includes areas such as board certified behavior analysis, clinical assessments, pairing impaired resources in occupational and physical therapy. So these are areas that we go outside of our current and our employees to seek the services that we need for some of our children. It is also very important to recognize that these projections are based on current known student needs and therefore are subject to change with new enrollments or evolving student requirements. Subscriptions, textbooks and supplies is showing a decrease of approximately $61,000. Some of our subscriptions are purchased for multi-years, showing a savings in the off-purchase years. The balance of $148,669 is reflective of all other line items within the operating budget. And I will provide the specifics to that dollar amount on the next slide. The total net change of $1183,500 represents a 5.9% over last year's approved budget. When we factor in a projected excess cost grant, okay, that's a reimbursement grant from the state for our students with exceptional needs. We can net $350,000 against our budget for a change of $833,500 or 4.1% over last year's approved budget. All other budget items are included in this slide and account for just over $2,100,000 of the overall budget. We increased our substitute line to more closely aligned with actuals of the past two years. Additionally, you will see an increased amount in the professional services line to account in large part for half of the school resource officer salary. The other line items incorporated into this slide are employer taxes, workers' compensation, unemployment, plant maintenance, stipends, legal fees, property and liability insurance, equipment, professional development, memberships and special programs, and field trips. Okay, let's take the data from the last two slides and show it in a visual form. The large blue area on the right, along with the orange at the bottom of the pie chart and the light gray are the combined drivers of salaries and healthcare benefits, equating to 69% of our overall budget. This percentage is similar to school districts across the state. A 4.1% budget supports current class sizes and allows for a continuance of current staff and programming across all of our grades. This budget will support all contractual obligations to upcoming contract negotiations, as well as funding of the Chromebook Refresh Program. In the past, we had purchased our Chromebooks through a grant and that grant has since sunsetted over the last number of years. We are budgeting for an extra or additional school bus for next year. As previously stated, this budget reflects a 1.6% increase for group health insurance and an increase of 5% for all business insurances, some of which are still being negotiated. The budget reflects adjustments for utilities, maintenance, and fuel at a combined 6.5%. We support 50% of the cost of the salary for our school resource officer. This budget will provide us slight savings with some retirements and illustrates a net reduction for the excess cost grant. And again, with that 4.1 is about $750,000 of our staff salaries that will still be allocated to grant resources. When we think about potential budget impacts, most importantly is the sustainability of personnel through grant funding. We need to continue to decrease grant-funded personnel and returning a percentage of those salaries to our operating budget. We have taken large chumps over last year for current school year and for next year. We're in a much better place moving forward after this, this particular year. The operating budget lines that support student support services is dynamic as the district continuously assesses our student needs. Changes to mid-year health benefits and unexpected building maintenance and repair is always an area of potential impact. Additionally, we are facing space limits, particularly at All Grove School and the middle school, where all teaching spaces are occupied. We need to be forward-thinking and consider the new homes being built and the possible impact to enrollment. The Board of Education Facility Subcommittee, with support from the district town facilities manager, is spearheading field and athletic space updates and maintenance. This has primarily been done through capital funds, non-lapsing funds, and in past years, some ESSER funds. We need to consider the cost, oversight, and maintenance of indoor and outdoor school spaces that are utilized year-round for school and community recreation. Education cost sharing is the state's contribution to our educational program. These funds go directly to the town. Town wealth is determined based on a town's property tax base and the income of its residents. The town of East Rambie is projected to receive an increase for the coming year of about $500,000. The excess cost grant, and many times the two are confused, but they are very different grants. The excess cost grant is provided by the state to school districts to assist in paying for special education expenses for students with extraordinary needs. We continue to apply for and receive grants. We anticipate some rollover funding in the IDEA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Act, of approximately $125,000 for next school year. Grant funding we expect to receive for the 25, 26 school year is estimated at our choice tuition, about $400,000. Choice academic social support, which supports academic and social programming for our students throughout the district, at about $85,000. Title grants are state grants and have specific use criteria. For example, some are positions that support student learning or professional learning are two very common areas for these state grants. Some title grants have been reduced over recent years by state calculations. Our estimated share is $50,000 for next year. The IDEA grant is estimated to be at $170,000 for next year. And our information technology department has applied in many years historically for what's called, it's either PEGPITY or PEGPisha, depends whom I listen to say it, in the amount of $81,000 for technology initiatives. As of recent, we were notified that most likely we will receive $20,000 of that grant. We always have requested high and received, you know, less than that amount. The Board of Education and school administration continues to be good stewards of the town's finances that are earmarked for education. In the past nine years, we have averaged a percentage increase of 2.85%. We are extremely thankful for the support of this community and the trust in our school district to make responsible fiscal decisions while providing, while providing an excellent education to all of our schools. Each month, the school business manager presents the financials to the Board of Education. This financial statement provides year-to-date line item balances. This financial statement, what we title object. It gives our object balances. Object simply means a description of what that line item is. We also provide a written summary and explanations when necessary, along with any year-to-date known encumbrances. Once the Board of Education votes to approve the financials, that financial report goes forward to the Board of Finance for discussion and approval. The financial statements are on the East Rambie Public School website under Board of Education, financials. For this budget process, we took those line items, what we call descriptions, and we broke them down by school and department. This slide shows the overall estimated budget for each school or department. This data is further broken down, showing all the line items by school or department with the FTED data, which means full-time equivalency for our personnel. Those data sheets will be available for you tomorrow morning on our website. And copies will actually in the, in the back table if you grab one. So by way of example, this, if you grab it in the back, this is what this particular packet looks like. packet looks like. Here is All Grove School. This shows the object or the line item and description, along with the projected FTE personnel and projected budget. Let's look halfway down on the left, and we see object 610, which is supplies. We follow that line to the far right and see a budgeted amount of $17,375 for supplies at All Grove School for the next school year. The bottom shows staffing numbers broken down by certified and non-certified, as well as anyone that might be funded through a grant. You see on the left that we have one administrator, four teachers in kindergarten, seven teachers in grades one and two, as well as one reading specialist. We have a health instructor, and we share special teachers such as music, art, library, and a school counselor. You will also see on the bottom right that All Grove School has paraprofessionals equating to a 1.5 FTE, one secretary, and 1.5 custodians. There is also an interventionist that is funded through a grant. Additional paraprofessionals that work specifically with children with an IEP will be noted on the Student Support Services budget page that will look exactly like this. So this is an example, and in the packet you'll have them for all of the schools plus any of the departments, such as curriculum, athletics, student support services, and the business To find this presentation and other budget information, please visit our website at eastgranby.k12.ct.us. Board of Education tab at the top toolbar, go to Budget, '25-'26, and then Public Hearing As always, thank you.
Great. Comment or questions?
I saw, I don't really remember the numbers, but there was a small decrease in the field trip. Is that to be decided, which one?
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry. So my question is about the school trips, the field trips, and I saw there's a cut in that line of, I forgot the numbers, but, you know, that's always such an enriching opportunity for kids, and I'm just wondering what's, are there certain trips that have been traditionally done that are just already off because of the budget change or?
Sure. Thank you for the question. The question is about the slight decrease in our field trip line. We did not reduce. What happens is with our budget process, all of our departments put together a budget. So for instance, our 612 math department puts together a budget, they will discuss that with administration, it comes forward to us. So it might just be a difference in cost in terms of what they are, what our students are requesting for next year. So there's nothing that's been cut or reduced. We do, everything as much as possible on actuals. So we receive, you know, binders from all of our departments in terms of very specific information they're requesting for their next year. Thank you. Sure. Yes.
All right. Let me see. Is there maybe you could go back to, I think it was slide three?
David, sorry. I messed it up. I know, and I won't be trying when I retire. I just need a drink of water. I had to put down the focus.
Sorry, Missy. Don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it'll get on the spot.
So I don't disagree. I think, you know, for the town, you guys have done great, and...
Is this the slide you're referring to?
Yep, that is the exact slide I was referring to, and I think you guys have done a great job. The only thing that I foresee a potential issue with is that the houses in East Granby still sell, right? And I think that's another testament to how well, you know, our education is in this town, right? Interest rates are still really high, but houses sell in two seconds in this town, even with home prices being high. The Grand Meadows, which, what is it, like 100, is it 116?
I believe so.
Yeah, it's like 116 single-family homes, which, I mean, there's what, two and three-bedroom, and I think even four-bedroom units that are going to come in, which when you buy a three-bedroom unit or a four-bedroom unit, odds are you have kids. And so I just, the only thing I see as an issue here is that I think school enrollment's going to go up. I know it shows projected flat, but, I mean, even if we get one kid in half of those houses, right, we're looking at what, 50 to 60 additional kids in our school district, which I know people, you know, I think the biggest thing is you say, well, that's great, well, how does it impact my family and my kid, right? I mean, that's the way we, that's the way people think. And so if this budget doesn't get passed, and we get 60 more kids, which is very feasible in 116 single-family homes, and I think the budget should be higher, sorry, but it is where it's at, and we get 60 more kids, and I think what the biggest impact is, is it kindergarten?
Grades two through five.
Two through five.
At our capacity.
If we get, you know, 20 more kids that are young, right, they're not, the Grand Meadows isn't huge, so maybe they're younger families, they have a lot of little kids, and they, all those kids, we get a, or a big chunk going to that, like, what is that going to do with the budget you have at 4.1? Like, let's pretend and go worst-case scenario, because I'm a conservative person, I would rather think worst-case scenario and come in under than go low and then like, oh my God, you need to spend more money, because then at least I've projected a budget and I'd come in under that. Like, what does that do to East Granby if we get, you know, 25 kids in our highest-impacted areas and then double that figure into other, sprinkled through other grades in the school district? How does that impact us if you don't even get your 4.1%?
Sure. It's a great comment. It's not one that we have not been discussing. Everything I have said tonight and over the past year has been prefaced with, based on current student enrollment. We know there's buildings, I believe all of the ones at Grand Meadows are all four-bedroom. I'm hard-pressed to think that we are not going to receive additional children in four-bedroom homes. I call periodically to see what the rental is looking like. It's fairly low right now, but they do expect that to change, and my understanding is the second phase will begin next fall, you know, right next to the Grand Meadows, which are additional to the four-bedrooms, I believe.
Next to Bramble Bush.
Next to Bramble Bush. What did I say?
Grand Meadows.
Okay. Next to Bramble Bush. Thank you. So to answer the question, we have our eyes open, we are forward-thinking. As a Board of Education, we have done some preliminary work. We actually waved some testing for a geotech report, if needed to add a modular classroom as one example into our All Grove. We do have an additional space still at Seymour School, so we have the space, but absolutely there'll be an impact in terms of teachers, supplies, all of that stuff. The concern is at All Grove School where we do not have any additional teaching spaces. That is why we want to be sure we are thinking ahead, and if there is a need for a modular, there's not a whole lot of options we have when we're looking at a classroom or at a school building, you know, and depending what that is. I don't have a crystal ball. I've heard everything from you should only expect, you know, 10 kids, to there's, you know, a lot of different numbers. You know, I'm not someone who panics, but I like to be someone who plans. So I think it's really important we do look at those options, and as a Board of Education we have, and like I said, we've done the preliminary work. What it will come down to in the end is we're probably back here looking for additional funding to support whatever that, whatever that need is. We could feasibly, you know, welcome 30 more children from grades six through 12 if they're spread out. We'll have a hard time welcoming just four more children in grade two. So until we know, you know, what grades the children are rolling, you know, it's kind of like a, you know, and like I said, they actually gave me a separate number, because they don't want me calling the number I've been calling anymore. They gave me a separate number because I do want to be sure that we are, you know, forward-thinking in that process. So I wish I had a better answer, but you are correct, this budget is based on our current number of students in districts.
So really, four kids in one grade causes you a real big problem?
It could. So if we have a class size of, class size guidelines of 22 in their guidelines, we can go, you know, above by a child or so, but four would be a big impact. And to be honest with you, our classes, our classroom space at Seymour School are not exceptionally large. You know, we do have, you know, children with mobility issues, we have to allow for additional space, so it might not always be 22, 22, 22. We might have, you know, 20, 23, 21, there might be a little bit of a difference, but for the most part, that is a, that I would say is a true statement.
And that would impact current taxpayers. I think that's the biggest thing. I think that I want to stress is that it's not thinking about families that aren't here and paying taxes, but it's people that live here, and it's going to impact our children if that's relaxed.
Paul Tulane, Sunrise Terrace. From the slide, actually, the 838, do you know how many of those are choice kids?
I believe we have about 46 children who join us from Hartford, the Open Choice Program.
And this calendar year, this school year, how many new kids came in, do you think? From choice?
We stay about 46 even. We try and keep it about even from year to year.
So six go, six come?
That's the goal, yes.
Pretty close. Okay. I mean, I recognize it would be income lost if we reduce the number of choice kids, I get that, but when compared against capital, you know, costs for, you know, new classrooms and so forth, of course, that would go into your...
Sure. Let me explain. We also don't open seats. We don't have seats open for children outside of district in any of these grades that we are at capacity. So we will not, we will not open up seats for any of our classrooms or our grades in where we are at our capacity. So if we do receive children from out of district, it will be in our lower...
Oh, sure, I get it. You afford what you can afford.
We have the ability to control that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Thank you.
Sure.
One more, just a comment to piggyback on all that. So when we talk about the mill rate, when we talk about the budgets going up, so right now they're asking for 4.1 and the town is asking for 2.8. That doesn't make sense that we're raising, that we're asking for a 2.5% increase on the surface, but it's because we're growing. So look at the mill rate increases, because we're also going to get tax revenue from the apartments to help offset some of that. So when we, if we see a 10% increase in the budget to justify that, we also need to talk about the revenues that are going to come in from those other buildings and how much they're going to offset that ask. So I think that that's, that's something that we'll know soon as they start moving in. So there's other components to it as well.
Other questions or comments?
Hi. A couple of questions. Craig Boyd, Lexington Drive. First, on the budget drivers, line item two, there's a, for the non-certified salaries, there was a footnote saying was being transferred, it was a line item transferred from the consultant line. Where is that consultant line? I don't see that reduction in the line.
That's a good question. So our budgets are, they're live, okay, so they're always moving. So the consultant line is what we call, it's, our number is a 330. You are correct, you are not going to see a reduction because there's other items in there that increase that line. So the net difference may not be an overall reduction, but we did move the salary of two, and we were paying a higher salary because we were using some consultants, hired our own pair of professionals, so now they're, they will be represented in our non-certified line. The consultant line where they were, most likely is not going to see a decrease because there's a lot of other consultants that come out of that line that actually is an increase.
So where is the consultant line or where are they included?
Sure. It's the 330, which is...
The student support. Student support. Student support, professional services, the buy, that one, it's in that line.
If you look at the second packet in the back, the one that has all the detail, this one here, the first page gives you all the lines, so that would be what we consider our 330 line. So that those costs and those consultants come out of that particular line.
Okay, great. And then just one other question. We're increasing buses from six to seven, but we're expecting enrollment to stay flat. So why are we increasing buses?
It's a good question. This year, we decreased buses, and we've been struggling to stay within a 45-minute timeframe for all of our routes. So we made a decision to increase the bus routes so that we can more evenly disperse our student riders and keep a timeframe which is in alignment with our board policy of about 45 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, thank you for your question, Mr. Lloyd. Because we do anticipate we're going to have children from that new, those new homes that most likely we're going to have another stop, another stop anyway, with additional children.
Right. So that begs the question as to why we aren't forecasting that. I know, you know, what you said about the forecast, but the forecast, if we anticipate that, it should be part of a forecast for enrollment, shouldn't it?
I can't forecast where the children will be enrolling. I think that's the tricky part, in like which grades they're going to enroll in. But that's why we're already, we're already doing the groundwork for the grades that would be most impacted, which are All Grove and Seymour School. So Seymour School again, but you're right, I didn't, I didn't budget for an additional teacher, you are correct. You know, we didn't, we didn't budget for additional supplies. We always have budgeted on what, you know, we have, you know, as a town, that's always been the request to budget unknown, so we have not, you know, forecasted in terms of what could be.
Thank you.
You know, and I just, you know, districts do it differently often, and there are many districts that always budget an additional future, and then they figure out, you know, once enrollment starts and once, you know, September rolls around, where that FTE would be best applied. We have not done that in this district, probably because we are smaller, so we have a better handle on, you know, our, our community needs. But yes, those are absolutely unknowns, and it could be a slight impact from what some people say, and it could be a great impact. I keep calling because I want to know, you know, for planning, because the elementary school, you know, definitely is something that would concern us.
Quick question. So if you're looking at the new building that we already have, if you're backing up and looking at the existing houses that we have in town, one of the largest buildings decades that we had was in the 1970s, which means my next-door neighbor, who just turned 85, is still living in that four-bedroom home. So if the biggest decade of building in East Granby was roughly in the 70s, early 80s, but that was, that seemed to be when I was looking at the information, you have a lot of 75 to 85-year-olds in town who may not be living in town at some point soon, and now you're going to have four kids coming into those houses as well as the existing houses that we have with kids, and is there any projection on that?
There is not.
Along with the kids coming into apartments?
Thank you for the question. There is not. I have no way of projecting which houses are going to be sold. We do keep a good eye on, you know, which houses are being sold and a building permit, that's part of our report. They look at, NESA looks at building permits, but no, we do not anticipate who might be selling a house and who might be moving in.
So like, as my husband said, like the Commission on Aging doesn't have an estimate of the age group that could be leaving town and how many possibilities that might affect... of the age group that could be leaving town and how many possibilities that might affect our school system?
I don't have the answer to that question. And it's not something that I've looked at in the past. It's a good, it's a good point of reference for sure.
Only because that was when one of our largest buildings in town was, in the 70s and early 80s, in comparison to Granby that had consistent building over each decade.
Sure.
There's definitely statistics of the, like, time people staying homes, especially with the housing shortage, people are leaving without.
Well, timeframes with somebody my age is different than timeframes who are my parents.
When we did the Village Center, right, when we did the Village Center study, there are, on the town website, they did population studies, so you can find some more information there, too.
Are there other questions or comments?
Just one last question on the history of the budget. So I know last year we were, we were tight and we didn't give anything back, but it looks like side 14. Several, several years in the past, we have reimbursed the town for dollars not used. Do we have any anticipated excess this year, or is that expected to be at budget?
It's too early right now for us to determine. We still have many encumbrances and costs that we're paying, so we usually don't have that number this early.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you everyone.
So this concludes the hearing. After a brief break, the Board of Finance is going to be, and I think there's a few administrators I haven't looked at anything in terms of what goes forward to town meeting. You're welcome to speak around if you have anything. Just going to take a minute, thanks.